The Muscatine City Council in-depth meeting will now come to order. Greg Monseigier, roll call please.
Uh, Councilmember Spread.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Shahadeh. Uh, Mr. Shahadeh, or Councilmember Shahadeh called and indicated he'd be absent tonight.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Natfig.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
And Lorette.
Present.
Six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, before we get started, folks, uh, those of you that have an agenda and counsel, we are going to, at the request of the city manager, move item number seven ahead of item number six, if you're following along. So let's get right into it. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving a subordination agreement for 212 Grover Street. The owners of this property participated in the city's 2009 CDBG housing rehabilitation program. As a part of that program, they signed a mortgage agreement. They now wish to refinance the property to take advantage of lower interest rates. Under the terms of the initial contract between the city and the Iowa Department of Economic Development, the city may consider all housing fund, housing fund mortgages as secondary to any other property mortgage. The city has provided similar documentation for several prior subordination requests. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So move, Your Honor.
Uh, Bob, and I need a second.
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Tom, discussion, council. No discussion, uh, this is a roll call vote, uh, we'll start with Bob.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six, zero. We have quite a few presentations tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We'll begin with item number three on your agenda, curbside recycling update. Laura.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and as all of you know, the city of Muscatine, uh, went into the adventure of curbside recycling, it'll be a year in April, and tonight I'm going to give a quick overview of what has happened over the last year and where we are today with curbside recycling. April 4th, it will be the one-year anniversary of curbside recycling in the city of Muscatine. This is not only our city residents that participate in this program with the blue containers, but it is also the city of Fruitland, which we contract for refuse collection services, the Muscatine Community School District, all of their facilities have containers, multiple containers, and they also have cardboard containers that have been supplied by Allied Waste, our vendor, who does the pickup for our recycling program, Bishop Hayes Catholic Schools, all of our preschools in the city of Muscatine, and all of our city Muscatine facilities. So we have a wide variety of recycling happening in our community. The success of this program, when this program began, the first month of April, 91.54 tons was recycled. Now, being that we were not sure how this program was going to take off, based upon the numbers that we had from our drop-off program, which also had county residents and outside of Muscatine County residents, along with city residents, we felt the program was very successful. This is from April through February, April 2011 through February 2012 numbers. The bottom line is, during that time, we've recycled 1,000, close to 1,160 tons of recycling in the city of Muscatine amongst all those facilities and Fruitland, and our residents have done a wonderful job. A quick through of our history of how we got to today, the bin delivery happened last year around this time, our facility on Hauser Street was full of these containers, multiple sizes, eight thou, approximately 8,600 households received containers in March. To prepare for the bin delivery, we had to put together material that would explain how the recycling program would work and the schedules. To do that, it was a joint collaboration with the city of Muscatine and Allied Waste, along with the Muscatine Community School District, the high school particularly, several local church youth groups, and the Rotary Group joined in, along with the Community College, to help do this on President's Day in 2011. And let me tell you, there were a lot of magnets and papers flying around the room. Along with that, you saw the magnet that we've all shared on our refrigerators over the last year with the schedule. Along with the schedule, we also provided a recycling guide of what could be recycled and what could not be. We've kept the material that we recycled at our drop-off facility around the community the same as in our curbside program. Plus, we were able to have glass in the program. Public education has been a key component from the day one of beginning discussions with this program. During the time the bins were delivered in the community, Allied Waste in the city of Muscatine went to visit each elementary school, preschool, and middle school, and certain aspects of the high school, to promote the program. The recycling truck visited 95% of the school facilities, showed how it operated, a safety video on the, how the recycling truck works, also promoting safety when the garbage truck visits your home also, to kick off the recycling program, and what could be recycled and what Along with that public education, the G2 program with the Muscatine Community Schools has played a very active role in our communication with our residents. This poster was designed in part of the waste management section of the G2 program, which I personally worked very much with, the entire seventh and eighth grade area of West Middle School during that semester. And with that, they put together this poster, these were our winners, Allied Waste framed their poster, and they've used this poster throughout the communities that they work with. And I do know that, that was a high honor for those boys to receive that. Again, public education played out through this entire year. Those two poster boards have been on display throughout our community, what can and what can't be recycled. We also participated in parades, joint efforts between the city of Muscatine and Allied And all of our different collections, again, residential collection is the key point of this program, and we are learning throughout this year, there have been some challenges with collection. We encourage adequate spacing from the containers. The ideal thing is, if there is a driveway, the garbage can should be on one side of the driveway, recycling can on the other. Sometimes that is not possible, we recommend a three-foot spacing, so that way the truck can pick up the container. Again, we have partnered with our schools, school containers are seen throughout the community. Another thing that we have also done is provided recycling for our downtown residents and apartment complexes that we service. And I will say, my fellow colleagues around the state all shook their head at me and said, "You're going to do apartment recycling?" I said, "Yes, we are, and I think we've done it pretty successfully." The public drop-off, which we removed 11 drop-offs from our community on April 5th, April 4th, 2011, to one location, and this is located down at the entrance of our facility on Hauser Street, the compo site and the transfer station. From April through February, 180 tons were recycled from just this location alone. It is serviced on a daily basis, the cardboard is dumped seven days a week, and it is full majority of the time. And this services not only our residents that may have excess flow, but our county residents. So summing it all up, curbside recycling has allowed our residents, from homeowners to apartment dwellers, to have access to a convenient recycling program. Participation rates of 95% for our residents show that recycling is a part of our daily life in Muscatine and our Fruitland communities. As with any new programs, there'll always be challenges in operations to work out. Allied Waste and our staff continue fine-tuning the program as new challenges arise. And my final thing I want to share with you, it has been a great partnership formed between the city of Muscatine and Allied Waste in providing a curbside recycling for our residents. That was my short, warm, fuzzy presentation, Greg, for you tonight. Thank you, Phil, yes. It is an honor, though, for me to have Nicole Schuler here tonight, and I'm going to have her come up to the podium. We do have a plaque from Allied that I would also like Mayor Hopkins to come up and receive on behalf of the city.
Wow, I'm going to need help here.
This, this here is a plaque that we would like to present to you, it shows how much recycling, Muscatine recycled for the 2011 year, does not include January and February of this year. So, and it shows the, the great effort that you had there, along with the environmental impacts that that has.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, um, I just wanted to say a few things. My name's Nicole Schuler, I'm the Municipal Services Manager for Allied Waste, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to, to work with Muscatine and provide the curbside recycling program. It's been very successful, mostly in part to Laura and her hard work to get that up and going, but a lot of it also has to do with the residents. The participation that we've seen, we certainly didn't expect that, it definitely exceeded an expectation of a program like that just taking off. So it really speaks volumes about the residents in Muscatine and just how environmentally conscious they are, so, congratulations.
Very good, thank you.
Good effort, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, very educational, informative, and rewarding, I must say.
Mayor, I do have one comment, I, I have been out in the public quite a bit, the last six months it seems like, and I've heard oodles and oodles of praise about those blue containers. And it's seemingly that people were doing it beforehand, recycling, but they really didn't know where to put it or what goes in. Your education is outstanding to, to tell these people what can and can't, can't be put into it, and that, that brochure sticker on your refrigerator certainly solves all the questions that you ever thought of asking. I didn't realize that 95% participation, I never would have guessed that in the beginning of the year that we'd get 95% of the people. That, again, is up and beyond the call of duty. And believe it or not, Laura, I learned something tonight, you educated me on, on how far those containers should be apart, I didn't know there was supposed to be three-foot spacing, so, knock, knock my fingertips that those drivers are probably saying, "There's Bynum's house, he just doesn't listen." But, again, I, I just want to say thanks. There is one challenge that I would like to put before you, is that those blue containers being left out, some of them are being left out week after week after week, and being able to educate those people to, "Would you mind putting it back into, inside your own garage?" But overall, the 95% participation, Mayor, I think she deserves a, a gold star herself. Thank you.
And I agree with you, Councilman Bynum, I didn't realize that there was a separation issue. But that's, I'm, I'm smarter, how's that?
Well, I'll certainly teach my wife now that there has to be three foot between the containers.
Anyone else, council?
Mayor, I have a quick question, regarding this, will a new schedule be put out for the upcoming year?
No, that's okay, you can just answer from there, Laura.
We will have a new schedule by the end of this month, and we'll be posting on the website, we'll also have copies of it, we're not doing a lot, but we will have copies available, we'll put those there, have them listed in all in our public records.
Okay, but they'll, they'll be available on the website, too.
Yeah, they'll be on the website, if they're, if they're scheduled, they'll be available also.
And that was the long answer.
Out of curiosity, how much interest was there in the smaller or the larger, I mean, what, 45 or 95 or whatever?
Um, it varies, it varies, more of our, I'd say, senior citizen residents requested the smaller container, and larger families wanted the larger container, but a majority of our bins are the 65.
I have one, one thing, about leaving the containers out, we have, maybe, maybe we need to take a look at the ordinance, because it's, ordinance speaks to when you can put garbage out, not talks about anything related to recycling. Excuse me.
It's more of a matter of, these aren't bins that are being left at the, at the curbside, these are bins that are being left outside, correct?
No, that's false, they, they've been left at the curbside.
At the curbside, okay, excellent.
Very good, thanks again, ladies. Okay, moving right along, item number four, discussion on proposed amendment to Title IV, Chapter I, Animal Regulations, Chief Talkington, I believe you have the floor.
Left your thing up here, Laura. I don't have a fancy, uh, thing like you do. Basically, we were, I was given the task of looking at the, the animal ordinance and the dangerous animal section of that, and that'd be in reference to the snakes themselves, where currently the, the code reads that, or the ordinance reads that you can't have a venomous snake or a constrictor snake, period. My recommendation to the city council is to leave that the way it is. I did some research on 12 other departments, or cities throughout the state, and 33% did not allow either venomous or the constrictors. 25% did mention, uh, I'm sorry, did not mention anything about those. 25% had length limits, two of them were six foot, Davenport has a 10-foot limit on those. And 17% allowed at least some type of boas or pythons. My suggestion, I was talking with Greg about this, is if there's an alternative, if you want to take a look at something else on this, I guess, a length limit, we could live with that as a police department, I am recommending that we don't do that, though, because I don't know where, excuse me, I don't know where we draw the line with that. You know, if you look at all the other dangerous animal definitions in the code, if somebody else comes up with something else in one of these other ones, are we going to look at that one, too? I think the code has been in effect for well over 20 years, we've made other people within the city get rid of their snakes that were in violation of this city ordinance. So, again, my stand is leave it the way it is.
Anyone on council have a question for the chief?
Mayor, I-
If you ask them to remove a snake, how, how much time do we give them, reasonable amount?
I think it's 10 days, yeah, and they can file an appeal within that 10 days.
Chief, I would certainly like to agree with you that you've done the research, obviously, from the packet that you presented to us, and, and we're really protecting the majority of the people, it's, it's a minority of the people that really abuse your ordinance or our ordinance, the city ordinance, and I, I'd like to protect the majority of the people here in Muscatine and say, "You've done your research, just leave it alone."
That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from with it, too, but again, I did put an alternative in here, if that's what you, you choose to do.
Right.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd, I'd just say that, that I'm in favor of changing it and putting in the length limit for six feet, um, you know, just, just looking at, at the previous, the first page of this information here, 33% did not allow any of the snakes, which means the other two-thirds had some allowance for it, Davenport has an allowance for it. I certainly think it's important that, that we, A, would have a reasonable limit on the adult length of the snake, and not just a general length limit, and two, as, as Chief Talkington mentioned, we, we have these animals registered with the city, so we know who has them, and I would even suggest that we would handle that like we do the fire pit permits, where it doesn't cost anything to register them, unless you don't, and then we find out later you have them, and then you get fined. But I would be, I would be in favor of changing the ordinance to allow for that length limit.
Anyone else?
That's the, the first time this was discussed, I mentioned that I was, I think we need to be careful about exceptions, and I haven't changed my opinion, and I, I would support the chief's recommendation.
And, and another thing, I don't know how you're going to measure them, because they curl up, you tell me who's going to do that.
Counselor Phillips.
Don't call me, because I'm not going to do it.
Chief, I'd like to thank you for all your research, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Not a problem.
I think the people in Fifth Ward do, too, I've had calls and talked to people, and, and I was on the commission that, that council that adopted that ordinance 20 years ago, so, thank you.
Not a problem.
Anyone else on council?
Greg.
Just one quick item, the ordinance is there to protect, I guess, the, the general public, it's, it's not there, um, it's for the benefit of the general public, not necessarily for those, those pet owners that are good pet owners that maintain their animals and don't let them loose, you know, we've, it's been on the news quite a bit lately, Florida, Everglades, a huge problem, I know it's not this particular type of snake, but they've got huge problems down there where these pets that are not native to the area have been let loose, they're out and about, you know, and, you know, become a huge problem to the native animal population, you know, I think that's one more consideration where, you know, our recommendation is to not change anything at this point in time, it's just one more issue to consider.
Very good, chief, thank you very much for your-
Thank you.
-presentation and recommendation.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfmiller is here, I don't know if he has any comments, but, just in case.
Anthony, care to address the council? Tell us your name and, and your address again, please.
Anthony Wolfmiller, my current address is 2420 Park Avenue, apartment 24.
Thank you.
I'm here requesting again that the city can, consider changing the city ordinance for snakes in the city limits to a length limitation or a breed limitation, particularly for constricting snakes, I have no reason to want venomous snakes in the city limits, that I agree totally with, but where it comes to constricting snakes, I think that a small size limitation should be allowed for certain breeds of snakes. The surrounding areas I go to particularly have several different types of snakes that get up to six-foot length limits, such as milk snakes, king snakes, some boa, constrictors, ball pythons, several different breeds of snakes are available for purchase in the surrounding areas. I feel that the city of Muscatine should allow certain, uh, certain snakes in the city limits for people that want to have them. I know that it would actually also boost some economy in the city, because I know Tony's Tropical, which is the local pet store, would be able to, again, sell reptiles in the city limits, which would boost his economy and the surrounding area for pets and pet owners. I feel that the city council should consider it as not looking at it that people are going to try to abuse it, but as, basically, it's the same as a cat and a dog. You could, somebody that has a cat or a dog, they decide they don't want it, they let it loose, the city fines them for animal neglect or animal abuse, and goes from there. Same should be recommended for reptiles, particularly snakes. I would agree with the city council if they do decide to change it for a registration, whether it be free or paid, I just particularly would really like the city to change, to change the ordinance for reptiles.
Anyone in council have a question?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Anthony, appreciate it very much, nice to have you back again. Okay, moving right along, item number five on your agenda, an update on ESI landfill status. Nancy, you have the floor.
Uh, we're giving this update to, to tonight, there was several requests from councilmembers just where we were on the status of the ESI accounts receivable, this has been noted in the last several audits as a potential high amount for an accounts receivable. We had, I explained in the, in the memo, this has accumulated over a number of years, ESI had been bringing us, their average monthly bill was about $70,000 for a while, that has been steadily declining, but the, the amount of the receivable is, a lot of that is based on the higher volume and, and bills that, that ESI had been getting from the city. The, uh, what we're very concerned about is that for a while we had been making progress on this receivable balance, at the end of, and I just have fiscal year-end balances, at the end of our fiscal year, June 30th, 2008, the balance was 691,000. This did decline to 727,000 in FY '09, and then further declined to 482,000 in June 30th, '10. Was slightly less than that, June 30th, uh, uh, 2011, but since that time, it has increased to 515,000. So, was our, we definitely don't want it to go up, it should be going down instead of going up. Since we, and I do frequently call there to ask when the next payments are going to be, the last several months they become more infrequent, and so that's what we wanted to bring to council's attention. Since I put the, uh, the information on the agenda, however, I have been in, in contact with the ESI owner, John Axel. He has, um, uh, written me a letter, and I talked to him this afternoon on the telephone. He's stated that, um, that January and February are low-volume months for his business, and with the, and the economy has had an impact on his business, high fuel costs also impacted. And then he also related that a lot of his bills, the permit fees are due this time of the year. He indicated that, and we did set a meeting time with Greg, myself, and Mr. Axel for March 27th, here at City Hall, he is out of town until then, but in his letter, he did indicate that he also wants to be able to reduce that amount that's owed to the city. So that basically is the update at this point. Over the years, we have had a number of agreements, and for a while they seemed to work, and then we reached a leveling off of those, so I'm hoping after this meeting that we can actually reach another agreement that will turn the receivable balance the right direction.
Anyone on council have a question for Nancy?
Greg, just some additional information, I did receive a, a memo from the city attorney this afternoon, which I will be forwarding to the city council, from providing a legal perspective on that as well, and if the council would like, at some point in time, we can enter into closed session, discuss legal aspects of the, of the issue at hand, perhaps subsequent- to discuss legal aspects of the issue at hand, perhaps subsequent to this meeting in two weeks. But I'll send that out tomorrow, so you'll have a copy of that.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, anyone else? Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it very much. As noted earlier, folks, we're going to jump down to item seven on your agenda, discussion on TIF request from R.L. Fridley Theaters. Who's making that presentation?
Why don't I start off? If you don't mind. We also have representatives from Fridley Theaters here with us tonight and the chamber. I assume, Mayor, you're taking minutes since I'm doing the presentation?
I can do that.
Just joking, just joking.
I thought Steve was going to do that.
Steve? Excellent.
I keep taking minutes, actually.
In the packet, you have a brief memorandum from myself and staff. Subsequent to that, you have an impact statement from Fridley Theaters, as well as some sample TIF, some sample TIF terms at 15 years. And the last item is the most recent plat, the final plat for the Fridley subdivision as well. So, just, my goal here tonight is to make sure that we're on the right track with our discussions with Fridley Theaters. We'd like to do a couple of things subsequent tonight. One would be to bring back an ordinance to establish a new TIF district in that area. Our bond counsel has presently begun the parameters of that district, which would include the property and all of the right-of-way for Mulberry, essentially, including the detention pond that is presently outside of the city limits. All of that would be included in the new TIF district. The second item would be to bring back a finalized TIF agreement for council action. And what I've tried to do tonight is identify the major issues that would be addressed in that packet. And then you can certainly give an opportunity to answer any questions to Russ or Mr. Fridley. And so, I'm just going to run through the terms real quick and give you a brief rundown of what those terms and conditions, the basic terms and conditions would be. At this time, I'm going to start with the summary of the bulleted items. We're looking at an economic development TIF for the area I just described. We are looking at a 15-year timeframe for that agreement. We are looking to include, as well in that agreement, a TIF component for the buildable lots that are not presently being utilized for the theater. So, the, I call them the outlots that could subsequently, for example, you could have a restaurant or, you know, another business or commercial office space in those lots. So, the TIF agreement would include the basic TIF program, the 10-year, 50% program for those outlots, and that would be included in this agreement. We'd also be indicating that there would be no further TIF allowed in that district, because this agreement would cover the entire district at this time. We are looking at a declining scale for this TIF agreement, starting at roughly 90%, and I'll review those here in a minute with the attached, with the attachment. We are also requiring the basic public improvements be included as part of the project. The interior public roadway improvements presently called Palm Drive, which would come off of Mulberry. Street lighting to MPW standards, a right-turn lane or a taper off of Mulberry into or onto Palm Drive and into the development. Costs associated with the extension of sanitary and storm sewer. A buffer between the residential retirement home and the Fridley property, essentially berms and trees, evergreens of some type. We are looking at, as part of the project, including trees in the right-of-way, whether that is with, working with the Fridleys or perhaps branching out, which is contacted. I believe, was it your office? Steve's office as well. They're willing to work with the Fridleys as well and supply trees. So, we'd like to get that done as part of the project as well. Related construction permits and sewer connection fees. We are recommending the waiver of connection fees for the right-of-way and the detention area, the right-of-way which would become a public street once the project is complete. There is one item that we are still in the process of discussing, excuse me, discussing, and that is the potential widening of Mulberry Street, where it intersects or starts to intersect with Highway 61. As you may recall, we're looking at the potential to essentially add a lane or to widen that area, so you'd have a left turn, a right turn, and a through lane across the bypass there. We're still discussing that component of the project. But if that were to be included in the TIF agreement, then I would expect, and I'll show you here in a moment, that the TIF terms would be slightly changed in the out-years. We'd also plan, as we typically do with our TIF agreements, there'd be some type of job or requirement as part of that. At this point in time, you know, 35 jobs or some type of annual payroll amount to be determined. We would include that in the TIF agreement. I mentioned the next two items, and of course, we typically require the payment of legal fees, which is standard on all of our agreements. Oh, and additionally, a nice little side note, the development, the Fridleys would be working with the police and fire department to utilize the current home for training, police department, police department, excuse me, would be able to utilize that prior to the fire department going in there. And then we would burn the house down as part of that training opportunity, leaving as little as possible for removal. I'm going to skip to the next page. I'm going to skip the next page, and I'll let Russ perhaps run through that in just a moment. And I'm going to jump to the page that gives you four different examples of how the TIF may work. Basically, what we're trying to do here is just give you an idea of what the terms and conditions would be and what the total TIF amount would be for the project based on those terms. The bottom left-hand corner, you see the basic program starting at 90 and ending at 10%. That would be, we'd be working with a program similar to that if we do not do the Mulberry component. If we do do the additional 200, well, about $180,000 worth of improvements for the Mulberry intersection, then we would look at doing something further. And those are the examples that you have above, and we're still in a discussion phase at this point in time. But there would be some additional TIF dollars utilized to offset the cost of those improvements. The idea being it's probably better to do it now rather than later, get it done. And while the construction is underway, we would certainly work with the business across the way during the construction to make sure that the, there's access and the road is open during the project. Russ, perhaps you'd like to just touch on that previous page real quick, and then we can open it up for questions?
Thank you, Greg. Mayor, council members. We've presented beforehand the concept that we would like to bring to Muscatine and the facility that we're interested in opening as proposed on the bypass in Mulberry. We prepared this impact statement, and it kind of gives you an idea. You know, first and foremost, by moving forward with this project, it ensures that Fridley Theaters can still operate within Muscatine. Our lease is going to be up in, I would say, the spring of 2013 with the mall. We, as we've spoke before, we're interested in building the theater to theater specifications and having the number of screens that we believe would facilitate the population of Muscatine and the number of movies that come out. This new facility, obviously, would enable Muscatine use and adults of Muscatine to stay in town and not have to go outside of the community to view movies that we're not capable of either bringing in at our current four-plex. Also, the things that we're proposing with this project are opportunities that they wouldn't even have in the Quad Cities or in Burlington or at Davenport with the giant screen, which would be larger than what the IMAX screen is, the adult-only auditoriums, let me rephrase that, the 21-and-over auditoriums, and having the ability to have food service and a lounge. So, we not only believe that it'll continue to keep people in the town of Muscatine, but we don't see any reason that particularly if you're borderline as to whether you would prefer to go to the Quad Cities or come to Muscatine for a movie, now it becomes a no-brainer, let's come to Muscatine. And we believe that the amenities of this facility as well will, you know, bring people that generally might even have been in Iowa City or in Davenport or in the Quad Cities for the opportunity to go to a dinner and a movie right in the same place. It's a pretty neat concept and idea. It's happening all over the United States. It was a consideration that we've had for some other locations for Fridley Theaters. Muscatine is just a situation where we need to move forward, and that's why we're bringing this concept to Muscatine before we do any of our other locations. Obviously, drawing patrons from surrounding communities. The project will initiate development on that west side of town. We've got that, oh, I think, a total of, what do we have, about 13 or 14 acres, I believe, over there, of which we'll be using five for the theater. Those additional outlots that Mr. Monsager was discussing, we hope to be able to develop and sell for businesses that would help, well, complement a movie theater, whether it be a restaurant, whether it be a little strip center, whether it be even professional offices that wouldn't necessarily use their parking during the evenings when we would have the usage for that on the nights and weekends. Obviously, a positive impact is there's going to be additional sales tax and real estate tax revenues. Currently, that parcel of land is being assessed at just, well, currently, it's just a residential in the house. If we are not able to move forward with the project, we would still be maybe working something out in the mall. I don't know if we'd be able to upsize or do anything in that way, and there wouldn't be that sales tax, or I mean that, well, obviously, the increased sales tax, but there wouldn't be that property tax opportunity out there, whether it be the theater or whether it be the outlots. Or as we continue to hopefully develop this as projected, I think there's the possibility of not just our parcel being developed. It's going to create a fair amount of traffic that will be coming around that area. And there's some land to the south that would be attractive, I think, to some people and potentially create some more development. A couple of notes here. In our last time that we were here, Councilman Philip, you had mentioned that you'd like to kind of see a breakdown of what our pay rates would be and what would. So, I kind of put together, most of these are taken from other facilities that we'd have that are similar. We operate a nine-plex in Ankeny, Iowa. It's called the Springwood Nine. We operate a nine-plex in Pleasant Hill, suburb, East Des Moines. We operate a nine-plex in Marshalltown. So, and now, this facility is going to be a little bit different. I don't foresee, love, but I do not foresee it doing the type of attendance numbers that in Ankeny or our Pleasant Hill, our Des Moines locations, even though this will be potentially 10 screens, it probably won't have the foot traffic that those two locations do. So, when I, we're pulling these payroll numbers and these anticipated jobs, I was pulling them from situations that we already have. So, in Ankeny's case, and I think if you look at one of these pages, and I don't know if, maybe we did not provide that in here. Let me look for a second. Excuse me.
The pro forma is not included, just the impact statement?
At our Ankeny facility, and I'll bring this up so I can at least give you the numbers, so you have an idea. In Ankeny, Iowa, in 2011, we had between 20 and 25 employees throughout the course of the year. Our business is seasonal. November and December, we're particularly busy with Christmas product. Fourth of July, Memorial Day weekend, whenever big movies are released, we're busier, especially over the holidays, and that's when we have some of our college kids that have worked for us in the past that are on break that come home. So, that's where that number fluctuates. We can have as many, I think even in Pleasant Hill, we have close to 30 employees. It just kind of depends on part-time, full-time, how many employees we have. Now, in Ankeny, last year in 2011, we spent approximately about $260,000 in payroll. This facility, even though I expect it to have a little bit less foot traffic, I expect us to end up having to pay more and have more employees due to some of the special amenities that we have in any of our other theaters. In this case, we plan on having a small concession support and kitchen in the back. So, we're going to have to have, you know, food preparers. We intend on having a lounge as proposed, which will require, you know, a bartender and some waitstaff. So, I don't think that that Ankeny payroll dollar is anywhere out of the realm of possibility, depending on our levels. You know, we've worked, Brian and I, and we've shared a few of these with Greg. We've worked on different pro formas, and, you know, if it's successful, and the best pro forma, we see, you know, having 35 employees and maybe even a payroll of 300-plus thousand. If it's not so successful, right off the get-go, and it takes a while to build up. You know, our Marshalltown, our nine-plex, I believe our payroll there was about $200,000 for 2011. So, that gives you kind of an idea. And one of the things you were curious is what type of jobs? Well, this kind of gives you a breakdown. Yes, we will have some full-time salaried positions. They'd be our managers, our general managers, our bar and food manager. We do rely very heavily on minimum wage and above-minimum-wage jobs. But I know when you look at some of these TIF proposals, a lot of times, that's something that you look at. You look at the jobs, and you look at what the pay rate's going to be and what type of sustaining money would be there for, you know, the people that are working there. The minimum-wage jobs that we offer obviously aren't particularly high-paying. But they are going to be, and the reason that we do use minimum wage is they are a lot of first-time jobs. It'll be, you know, sophomores, juniors in high school. We're teaching them their first job. And it may not be as, you know, obviously, as worthwhile as a lot of the high-paying jobs, but it is worthwhile to have our young kids work at a place that you feel comfortable with them working at. So, we do rely pretty heavily on minimum-wage jobs in that case as well. Sales tax numbers, we provided Greg with numbers for the last two or three years, obviously based on different levels and projections and pro formas. The facility's going to make more money, so there's going to be more sales tax dollars, obviously, available. I think that kind of pretty much covers the impact statement portion of things. Were there any questions, or is there anything that I didn't follow up on, Greg, that you were thinking that we discussed?
Certainly opened it up for questions, unless Greg or Bill had any comments. But, you know, it is our recommendation that we proceed with a TIF agreement and the ordinance as well, with a 15-year declining scale, and bring that back to the city council for action. Tonight, obviously, there's no action, but if there is a consensus that we're going the wrong direction, I'd need to know that. But I think if we're going the right direction, we'll bring that back for council's final action.
Did you mention in your early presentation that there was one of your complexes, like in Northwest Iowa, that a similar-sized town, and that, how long, I want to say Pocahontas or somewhere, but how long has that been in, you know, in service and?
When we were here last time, I'd brought up Spencer, Iowa, as a location. And it's a seven-plex, a little bit smaller community. When we started, we've done some really good comparisons off of some of our own facilities and some of the other theaters throughout the state that have the same type of population, that have some of the same medium incomes. And based on those numbers, we believe that this facility with the 10-plex, you know, because Spencer's base seven, with the 10-plex, the current population and the drawing area, we would expect it to do better than that. So, we're kind of basing our numbers off of our current nine-plex complexes. We expect it to be less than those. We expect it to be less than those. And we've also looked at Sayatoga, for example, they're a seven-plex, real base, small seven-plex that does fairly good business, that is, you know, similar in population and lower, especially in the 10-mile radius, I believe, that Muscatine had a higher population base and a higher median income. We also have calculated, you know, we look really closely at what we call per capita's, and that's the average amount of money spent by each person that comes through the door, that they spend at the concession stand. And Muscatine performs at four Fridley Theaters above average, actually well above average. So the average person generally spends more in concessions in Muscatine than they do in a lot of our other locations, which obviously makes us feel even more comfortable with moving forward with a kind of a different concept that will hopefully raise per capita's for the whole facility.
I can see where, you know, the attendant increase in business too. People are going to eat, they come from some distance and purchase fuel and all kinds of things.
Yeah, I suppose Casey's will be thrilled. I lost my point there. Oh, one of the other numbers that we'd shared were some attendance numbers with Greg, and you know, in the last couple of years, we've varied from anywhere from about 78 to about 90,000 people that have attended the Muscatine, the Plaza Four. We believe that that will be able to be expanded heavily. Number one, by offering the product that people want. There's numerous times that we're not capable of playing movies on national release or even just having the options of the movies that we do play there. Take Lorax, for example, the new Dr. Seuss animated movie. In our nine-plex in Ankeny and Pleasant Hill, we currently are playing it in both 2D and 3D format in different auditoriums. In Muscatine, we don't have that flexibility. We don't have enough screens, so therefore we play it in one auditorium. We try to switch back and forth, 2D and 3D formats for different showtimes, but having that ability and allowing the customer to pick which movie they want to go to or which format they want to will help increase our attendance numbers, even just with the base amount of people within Muscatine offering those movies. As we've been working on this project and people have come to us and voiced their excitement and some avid moviegoers, a couple that are in this audience, you know, they say, hey, we were really hoping you were going to get this movie and/or we really wanted to see it, and hate to say it, but we end up going somewhere else to be able to watch that. I think that will really help drive up the attendance numbers. And then also, this facility's going to be very, very nice. We've known for a little while that we would probably be need to do something else, so we have not invested a lot of money in our four-plex at the mall for a while, and it's a little rundown. And I think people are pretty aware of that if they... And still, to Muscatine's credit, you guys have supported that theater. Hence the reason we're looking at expanding and doing this project.
When do you think that your operation will start construction and when do you believe that construction will be completed?
Fingers crossed. We would like to be, well, we'd like to be open, say by the end of November. That's, that would be great. You know, the Thanksgiving product that comes out, it's probably not terribly realistic. We've got quite a bit of work that we need to do with different municipalities, whether it be MPW or working with Greg and working with you guys. Then, once we get that okay, we have to begin getting site work done, selecting the general contractor, getting the work done. I mean, we've been working up to this process. Realistically, if we're open by the end of the year, I think I'd be pretty happy. We really, there are some incentives for us, digital projection-wise, to be open by January. If we're not open by January, then we would lose those incentives. It would make it difficult for us to continue with this project. So that's kind of the date that we're really looking at. And obviously, if we weren't able to renegotiate some type of lease, if we even got further down the road, if we couldn't come up with some sort of plan to develop this land, then we'd be looking at something completely different.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Bill Phelan, President of the Chamber, would like to make some comments?
Bill Phelan with Muscatine Chamber, and you know you can only keep me quiet for so long, especially with an outstanding project like this. And I applaud and thank Fridley Theaters and Brian and Russ for giving this community an opportunity that I would venture to say it's never had. As you go through your contemplation of the dollars and cents and all those kind of things that we as residents expect you to do, I would encourage you to think about where you'll be, where we could be in a couple of years. What are the residents going to remember about your consideration and your thoughts and your offers and all those kind of things? Probably not the dollars and cents. They're kind of, they are going to remember the pride that there's a new complex out here, something that no community near us has. When was the last thing that we put here that we could actually say that about? When was the last time that you, as council members in our city, had the opportunity to do something that no other community has done? When was the last time that you could brag about your community and say, by golly, this is something that I helped do? This is something we brought into this community, and yeah, we may have gone out on some thinner ice than maybe we were before, but by golly, it's sitting out there for us to use. Speaking of it from a parent, I can tell you, I'd much rather had my sons driving to the end of Mulberry to go to a movie than I would have had them go to the Quad Cities in all kinds of weather. I'd much rather have my elderly people in our community going out there safely, perhaps even in muskabuses if they had to, to go out there and watch a facility that no one else has in our community. I'd say that you know as well as I do, I think, that I doubt if any of us can think about a theater in any community like this, like this complex, that doesn't, that isn't just surrounded by restaurants, retail shops, and independent business people that are growing their economy. You know that's going to happen out here. It's a quality of life issue. Mr. Mayor and all of you and the whole community's been very aware of the intense review that the Blue Zone Group has been doing of our entire community, all the things that we do and all the things we do so very well. This is a quality of life issue that reaches very deeply into our community. This is going to have the potential to touch every resident in some way, shape, or form. They may not even be moviegoers, but I bet you they have children, relatives, friends that are. This is a business attraction. When businesses want to bring those young professional people here, when they want to attract community-minded people here, when they want to bring executives here, this is going to be one of those things that will be able to, they'll be able to brag about their community and keep those residents right here rather than forcing them to perhaps go to the Quad Cities or Iowa City. This is one of those things where businesses have already, we've already talked with Brian and Russ, and they're already looking into preparing how the theaters could team up and partner with the businesses here to do training, hook up computers and laptops and all this kind of stuff to this wonderful projection and sound equipment that will be in this facility. Can you imagine going out there and having a major training session, perhaps for the city, perhaps for any of our local businesses? Can you imagine bringing all your employees into one place and having training going on and quality of sound and projection that that facility will have? Not to mention the food and all those kind of things that will be available at a touch. I'd ask you to, whenever possible, you heard that they're really aiming for as quickly as possible, they'd like to start on, in Thanksgiving. We have the power, you guys have the authority and the ability to make that happen, unlike any chamber or any council before you. You can make that happen. The community's waiting. I encourage you, I don't know how many, and I dare to say probably hundreds that I have talked to of residents in our community that said, I hope this doesn't slip through our fingers. We need this in our community, just not from a chamber standpoint, but from our residents. Our residents deserve this. We have a company that's coming here to spend multi-multis, millions of dollars on our behalf. Now, yeah, they're business people. They're probably expecting to make a return on this. All of us do. But they're doing a big service for our community. They've been here almost 30 years already. That's saying pretty good. There's been companies come and go in those 30 years, and they're still here. Let's give them the opportunity to really step up, improve our community, let us have those tools that economic development can work on, Blue Zone can work on, our community can be proud of, our residents can say, by golly, I don't have to send my sons and daughters out on the road. I know right where they are. They're two blocks, they're six blocks, they're a mile from my home. I know they're going to get home safely tonight. I'd encourage you, if you haven't done it already, and I bet you most of you have, and I bet you people have approached you all over the place, your constituents are saying we'd surely like to have this in our community. I'd encourage you to see what you can do to bring it on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Bill. Council, any questions for our guests tonight, or Greg or Bill?
Mayor, I have a question for Greg. TIF reform is on the docket in the state legislature. Is there anything we're talking about here that could possibly run afall of what they're trying to do in Des Moines?
The, it's a 15-year term, so term limits are part of that. There's several different types of restrictions, but our goal is to get this done as quickly as possible, get the ordinance done. Are we going to have it next week, hopefully, to get that moving forward, get the agreement on there shortly thereafter and get things moving? So we would be able to get this process done, completed relatively quickly. And everything is still up for discussion down in the state. I was reading a recent update, and I don't think they're any closer, things are held up in the Senate right now, so...
But is there anything out there that they're talking about that...
Well, the major concerns was the Corville, Iowa City issue and going from one city to the other, and maintaining TIF beyond the terms of an agreement. None of that is which were, you know, related to what we're talking about here today.
Okay. So, but is the 15-year...
No.
And we've done that in the past, so, but that's...
Not to this extent. I mean, you know, it, with the declining scale, but the benefit from our perspective is, there's a benefit from the business perspective, they get a little more upfront, but we get more down the road as Mulberry, as it becomes time for Mulberry to see improvements. Mulberry's pretty much a rural road with ditches on either side, similar to Colorado Street. It's going to need improvement down the road, so when it's time for Mulberry to get improvement from Hauser out towards the development, we'll have funds coming in to help support that improvement. So I like the declining scale from that perspective.
Anyone else, council?
I think that both Bill and the Fridley folks have outlined the benefits very well. I also think this is consistent with our infill objectives, and I see just nothing but positives here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thanks again, gentlemen, appreciate it. Okay, item number, actually six, but it's seven now anyway, voluntary annexations review.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to just be briefing you on the three voluntary annexations that you'll be hearing at the April 5 meeting. The first one, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, it's part of the Fridley Project. Basically, it's the westernmost 2.8 acres of the project. You can see it there on the map in yellow. Pardon me. Essentially, as part of this annexation, the intent is to bring this in under the S3 zoning, which will make it consistent with the request for the S3 zoning that's currently underway. On this portion that's being proposed for annexation, right now it's a 1.6 acre detention base that's being proposed, as well as about 40% of one of the commercial outlots. The second voluntary annexation that we're presenting on the 5th of April is 47 acres down at the airport, and this is in two separate portions, which I've marked on the map as Area A and B. Basically, it's areas at the end of each runway. I got, not sure why it's doing that tonight. About 16 acres at the end of the Crosswind runway, a further 31 acres at the end of the main runway.
I hope so.
These 47 acres have been acquired in stages over the past about 10 or 15 years as part of the Federal Aviation Administration's Building Restriction Line Program, as well as construction of the Crosswind runway. The intent is to zone these as airport district, consistent with the rest of the airport. About 16 of these acres at the end of the main runway in Area B, just one are being farmed as part of the agricultural lease. There'll be a small savings to the city in property taxes by annexing this area. And then finally, the third annexation that will be, the third annexation that you'll be hearing on April 4th is for the Irish Ivy subdivision, Parkview condominiums. It's about 16 acres, and it also includes about 1.8 acres of city-owned land on the south end, south edge there where the trail runs through. Both the Parkview condominium association and the Irish Ivy subdivision have signed pre-annexation agreements with the City Muscatine. These were signed in exchange for hooking these area up to sanitary sewer, and both these areas are now indeed hooked up to sanitary sewer. Upon completion of this annexation, it'll add the following to the City Muscatine, about 28 homes, increase the population by about an estimate of 68 people, and it'll add about approximately about $40,000 a year in annual revenue to the city budget. And the intent is, in regards to zoning, the intent is just to give them a zoning district that's most consistent with their current county zoning district and the land use. And so for the Parkview condominium area, that would be the RL zoning district, which is also what you see in the condominiums across Colorado Street there. For the Irish Ivy subdivision, it would be the R3 residential zoning district, which is consistent with that size of residential zoning. And then for the small parcel that the trail's on, because there is no specific park zoning district, it would also be zoned R3, which is consistent, Weed Park is now zoned. What we have here is, we, well, once we had these signed voluntary annexation agreements in hand, examined the possibilities of possibly annexing a large area. The area that was kind of looked at and studied was essentially everything, everything south of Highway 22 out to the Han, Geneva plant. Contact was made with all the property owners in this area. It did result in some very preliminary discussions with a few of the landowners and a homeowners' association regarding to annexation. However, nothing came of those, and none of them decided ultimately come in in this voluntary annexation. The other thing that staff looked at was what's known as non-consenting voluntary annexation, which may be more commonly known as the 80/20 rule, in that is you can have a voluntary annexation where 20% of the land masses is with non-consenting property owners. However, with the property that we do have consenting owners for, that doesn't, there was really no viable options for that. So then staff's recommendation was to go ahead and execute these voluntary annexation agreements and bring them into the city. agreements and bring them into the city. And finally, just give a brief timeline of how this will all move forward from here. April 5 will be the public hearing, and the City Council will take action on the annexation resolutions. Assuming that they are approved, then where it goes from there, from mid-April, all the annexation documents will be prepared, recorded, and submitted to the Secretary of State as required by state law. Then sometime towards the end of April, early May, if things go as they typically do, we'll receive notification from the Secretary of State that all the requirement, all the required documents have been submitted, they're in the correct form, and at this point, the annexation's now final. Then upon finalization of this annexation, city services of the annexed areas begin, as well as the 10% non-resident sewer surcharge that they're now currently paying ends for those people. On July 1, 2013, the start of the new fiscal, the start of the 2013/14 fiscal year, these properties are added to the city of Muscatine tax roll, which means that the first property tax payment that residents of these new annexed areas would have to make, that includes the city of Muscatine levy, would be due on September 30, 2013. So that ends my presentation, so if anyone has, any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them.
I had one, one question the other day about the trail. Is that city-owned property?
Yeah, I mean, go back to that, that's a...
And has it been city-owned property since the trail was installed?
I believe it has. It's 1.8 acre, you can kind of see it there on the south edge there.
It's not, it wasn't an easement?
No, it's a city-owned parcel.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, council? Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate the information. Well, at this time, we'll have comments from council, starting with Mark.
No comments this evening, thanks, Mayor.
Still?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor?
I, oh, yeah, thank you.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor?
Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, Greg?
Nothing, Your Honor.
And I have nothing. I would entertain a motion.
Some...
You first.
I thought we couldn't adjourn.